Good afternoon. It's 4:30 PM on Monday, October 14th, 2024. We'll call the meeting of the City Council to order. Item number one is the consent agenda. Counselors, what are your wishes?
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item 2.1, we have a public hearing for noise variance for Rush. At this time, we will open the public hearing. If you would like to have your comments heard, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Do we want to talk a little bit about what this is?
It was in the packet. Mr. Dalton isn't here. Just in summary, it is a public hearing for the closing or the option to permit amplified sound and music for a fashion show on Friday, October 18th, from 5:00 to 11:00 PM on the rooftop.
And I assume we had no oral contact or anybody called or in writing? Are you aware of any?
None that I know of.
Okay.
And I've received no, no information from anybody or any complaints thus far. And it's a couple of businesses working together to do something different. I, and it goes till 11:00 PM, which we've kind of agreed upon as a reasonable time for weekend events like this.
I'm not seeing anybody from the audience coming forward, so I'll offer a motion to conduct the public hearing here and pass all objections, whether presented orally or in written, related to requests for the noise variance.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Assistant Director Amira, please call the role.
Should we put the date and time into the record?
Oh, yes, we should.
Yeah.
Read the second half.
Go ahead, Counselor Mack.
Resolution.
All right.
To the public hearing, offer the resolution, closing the public hearing, authorize the request from Aaron Bodie, Rush for noise variance permit amplified sound and music for private event fashion show on Friday, October 18th, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM on the Rush rooftop, 126 North Minnesota Street.
Second.
We do, thank you. We do have a motion and a second.
What kind of fashion show is this, Aaron Bodie? Come up here and tell, talk to us for a second. I want to know.
Still have to state my address? It's always like a fall fashion. So they're going to be presenting fashion, and I'm going to be presenting like a whole new menu. So it's this idea of making two businesses showing what they're doing, kind of going forward, if you will.
Can you mention how those businesses are?
So Gallery 512 Shells and then Rush, myself, and then Lola is included in that. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Aaron.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We know.
Thank you. Assistant Director Amira, please call the role.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item number 2.2, a public hearing on the final plot of Court's third subdivision. Mr. Schnobrick.
Madam President, members of the City Council, you considered the preliminary plat at your September 3rd meeting, and you approved it at that time. The applicant in this case is Shelley Winter. The current legal description of the property is Lot 3, Block 1, Court subdivision. The street address is 16065 Casey Road. The property is generally located south of the Casey Road, west of Huffman Road, and it abuts North Highland Avenue. Utilities are located in North Highland Avenue and the Casey Road. The utilities of North Highland Avenue are the ones that would serve this parcel. The existing house is currently on a well-enseptic system and will remain so going into the future. One set of services has been extended into the future Lot 2. The amount of area to be platted is 2.75 acres. The property currently consists of one lot, will be subdivided into two. Lot sizes more than meet our minimum requirements. The conditions that were identified for approval have all been addressed with the exception of one, and that has to do with Lot 2 will pay the connection charges for utility service. That's $3,000 for sanitary sewer, $3,000 for water main, and $1,400 for a sanitary sewer lift station. I would note that the Planning Commission recommended approval with one condition at their September 26th meeting. That would conclude the staff report.
One question, Dave. Do you want that read into the record, approving it with the sack and whack fees or not? It just doesn't have to be. It should be, right?
Those fees are in our fee schedule.
Right.
But yeah, that would be appropriate. It is a condition to the.
Okay.
You didn't hear any concerns from anybody?
No.
All right.
At this time, the public hearing is open. If you have any comments, please state your name and address for the record at the microphone.
I'm not seeing anybody come up. I'm going to close the public hearing and offer resolution approving the final plat of Court's third subdivision located at 106065 Casey Road. With the one stated condition, Lot 2 will pay the per lot utility charge of $3,000 for sanitary sewer, $3,000 for the water main, and $1,400 for sanitary sewer lift station due at the time of connection.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Assistant Director Amira, please call the role.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Item 2.3 is a public hearing on the final plot of the Wells subdivision. Once again, Mr. Schnobrick.
Yes. So the City Council again approved the preliminary plat at your September 3rd meeting. The applicant in this particular case is Adam and Shana Wells. The legal description of the property is part of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter, Section 13 Township 110 Range 31. Street address is 2312 North Highland Avenue. Property abuts North Highland Avenue and is located north of Lake Avenue and west of 23rd North Street. The property was annexed into the city on October 4th of this month. The platted area totals 5.46 acres. It currently is one parcel, one lot, and it will be subdivided into five lots. Lots 2 through 5 comply with the city's zoning standards for R1 zoned lots. Lot 1 complies with our standards for a parcel in the AOS zoning district, as well as the medium-density residential district that we have in our comprehensive plan. There is residence on Lot 3 that was constructed in 1967. It's approximately 1,600 square feet in size. As far as conditions are concerned, the plating fee for this particular request, that payment has been made. The parkland dedication fee, that payment has been made. The rezoning of the process, or the rezoning of the property, excuse me, is in process. Again, this property is subject to the connection charges that we just talked about with the previous request. And then each platted parcel excluding Lot 3 is required to construct a stormwater treatment facility onsite as part of the final development of that parcel. The property currently is not served by one of our stormwater facilities, and that is the basis for that condition. That would conclude the staff report.
Thank you. Again, this public hearing is open. If anyone would care to be heard, please state your name and address for the record.
I don't see anybody getting up, so I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing, offer a resolution approving the final plat of Wells subdivision located at 2312 North Highland Avenue with the following conditions: plating fee of $350, parkland dedication fee of $1,750, the rezoning of Lot 1 to R3 is a delayed option, and per lot utility charge for Lot 1, 2, 4, and 5 of $3,000, the sanitary sewer $3,000, and water main for $1,400, and for the sanitary lift station are due at the time of connection. And lastly, each platted parcel excluding Lot 3 shall construct a stormwater treatment facility onsite as part of the final development of each parcel to be completed as lots are developed.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Assistant Director Amira, please call the role.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. One more public hearing is item number 2.4 regarding the final plot of South Point Financial Edition.
Okay, again, the City Council recommended approval of the preliminary plat at your September 3rd meeting. The applicant in this particular case is South Point Financial Credit Union. Property is legally described as part of Lot 3, Block 33, north of Center Street. Street address is 711 North Spring Street. Property is generally located west of North Spring Street and north of US Highway 1415, and this particular piece of property previously was owned by Mendat and was part of their right of way. The platted area total is .15 acres or 6,400 square feet. The property is currently described using a meets and bounds legal description. Our code does not permit those, and so that is the basis for the plat. South Point intends to use this property for parking for employees as well as snow storage, and they anticipate having approximately six spaces there. Planning Commission recommended approval at their September 26th meeting, and there are no conditions with this plat. That would conclude the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Schnobrick. Again, the public hearing is open.
Again, seeing nobody coming to the mic, I'll close the public hearing and offer resolution approving the final plat of the South Point Financial Edition, generally located west of North Spring Street and north of US Highway 12-15.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Amira, please call the role.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Moving on to license and permits. Item 3.1 is a tree service license.
I'll offer a motion to approve the issuance of a tree service license for Clayton Wilcheck, 28799, Serenaroe Avenue, Morgan, Minnesota, for the period beginning October 16th, 2024, ending June 30th, 2025. Subject compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
And then a second. Any additional discussion? In favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That does carry. Item 3.2, off-sale intoxicating liquor license.
Make an emotion to approve. I'll offer a motion to approve the issuance of an annual off-sale intoxicating liquor license for BFD2 LLC, also known as Rush, at 126 North Minnesota Street, Suite 200 for the period beginning October 16th, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 4.1, summary of business conducted during board and commission meetings. We'll start to, you're not going today?
All I have is just a short one. Last meeting, I reported on Westridge Place Insurance having difficulty, and they're still working on it. Looks like they found a provider, so they're still working out the details. We'll know more at the next meeting. So that's all I have.
Heritage Preservation meets next week. Park and Rec last night had a busy agenda. Park Commission was presented the feasibility study on Herman, the German. So if you do get a chance, read through it. It's an excellent report, and Sheppo's letter of support. Also, the Herman Monument Society requesting permission for Christmas lights on the fencing up at Herman. That will come to us next week, or in November, excuse me. Also, the BMX agreement presented, they accepted it with the, also, the loan is built into the agreement, takes our approval next month. That'll be forwarded to us. And then also, the Park and Rec had a good month again with donations, $5,200. Again, they'll all be presented to us in November.
Thank you.
I've got nothing.
And just from Brown County Solid Waste Advisory Commission, one major thing that they're having problems with is still battery recycling being done properly. I've reached out to Clay at the Journal. We might try to get him in touch with the right people to start to educate the public of what's proper for battery disposal, because it is going to become a problem with it being everything is wireless nowadays. So they're trying to get, stay ahead of it before it becomes an absolute nightmare. So just learn the new stuff.
Very good. Mayor?
I've had a busy weekend. First of all, we did the review of the community collage, so the different images of our community represented there. And I think the benefit of it is if you look at that collage, and if you can identify with anyone on that photo, it also validates you if you didn't make it to the photo session and so on. So I really appreciate the efforts of the Downtown Action Council Board and the Chamber of Commerce for making that, and all the donors for making that possible. On Saturday, I tapped the keg to kick off the Downtown Oktoberfest, and I imagine some of you were there. I didn't see you in the crowds, but I started at 10:00 in the morning, and I was still active at 11:00 at night. It was a great day. And of course, I'm not sure who's responsible for the weather that we've had on the two weekends of Oktoberfest, but it was absolutely terrific. Also, we had our EDA meeting, and the business that was conducted there will be reported, and we'll get an update during that part of the meeting, I'm assuming. And we had our New Ulm partnership meeting was rescheduled, so that'll be tomorrow. And that takes care of my report.
That's great. All right. I'll just do a report, kind of a recap of the EDA meeting. We did have a public hearing and are moving forward with the sale of Garden Terrace Apartments. And we, as an EDA, are, I think, thinking positively that this is going to be a great decision and opportunity for the city. The company purchasing it is already investing in other areas of the community as well. And then we did meet the new director, the executive director for New Brick, Mr. Stephen Brown, and I know that he has been busy getting boots on the ground and getting out, meeting people. So we'll be looking forward to another report from them next quarter. And those are my updates.
May I make another comment? I forgot.
Yes, Mayor.
I don't know how I could forget. I'm deeply entrenched in looking for people, first of all, for reappointments for commissions. We have a list of the commissions that need appointments to them. We have 11 open seats. I am working, meeting, first of all, with, as an example, with April from the library, with Chris Mandelfelder regarding PUC. So working behind the scenes to get those names forwarded by January. If anybody here has names that they would like considered, please forward them to me so that I can make the appropriate contact. Sometimes people are eager to make contacts on the behalf of the city, or the commission, or myself, not knowing that there might be other people for consideration on an existing list. So I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess on that note of committees and commissions, Mr. Scott, since you're here with us this evening, I know at a work session a couple of months ago, we talked about like a youth counselor, a junior counselor, and was curious if we should be sourcing for that as well this year.
Thank you, Council President. I remember we looked into this, and I don't remember what the advice was specifically. I can certainly follow up with City Manager Dalton tomorrow.
Okay, certainly. Thank you so much. With no other comments, we'll move on to Section 5. Item 5.1, we have a donation of a lion man figurine from Ulm, Germany by no other than Dennis Warda. Mr. Warda, thank you for being here. Can you tell us about what we have in front of us this evening?
It is a real privilege and real privilege and pleasure for me to present this to the city. I've been working on this for some time. I did not want just an ordinary copy of it. I wanted a copy as closely as possible to the original. And it will fit in very nicely in our, in our display in the lobby here at City Hall. Some of the explanations are already there accompanied by pictures, but now it will also include this very close duplicate of the actual lion man. Forty thousand years. Human mind can hardly comprehend something that old, but more importantly, that humans at that time had the skill and the tools to carve something like that out of a mammoth tusk. It's an incredible accomplishment to human kind. Thank you very much, and it was my pleasure.
Thank you, Danny.
Mr. Warda? Thank you. We would be looking for a motion to accept this replica donation.
I would be glad to offer that resolution to accept the donation of the replica of the lion man figurine from Ulm, Germany, given to the city of New Ulm on behalf of Dennis Warda.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Just a big thanks to Danny for your work on this. I know this was a passion of yours, and thank you on behalf of the city.
Thank you.
Danny?
Thank you.
Assistant Director Amira, please call the role.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Thank you again. Under Old Business, item number 6.1 is in regards to ordinance number 2024-091, second consideration of zoning. Mr. Nysley, hello.
Good evening, Council President. Counselors, John Nysley, planner with the City of New Ulm. Again, this is the second consideration of this ordinance. The Planning Commission at its September 26, 2024 meeting unanimously recommended approval of all three of these amendments that we're proposing here tonight, and the findings of fact and the reasoning behind their decision is included in your packets. City Council at its October 1st meeting of 2024 had the first consideration of the ordinance and had made no suggested changes to what the Planning Commission had passed. Just a very quick summary of what's being changed here. Table 3.1 is simply a terminology change to make language consistent throughout the zoning ordinance. Table 4.7 is to add new regulations for the development of corner lots in the RT2 zoning district. And then Table 5.3 is developing a second set of standards in the B3 zoning districts for the development of lots less than 20,000 square feet. We've received no comments from the public regarding these amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Nysley.
Counselor Wormka, Counselor Mack?
Ours is not happening.
Ours went blank. Again, you gotta make both of those. Sorry.
Mine's not loading here, but I'll read off the ordinance here. So, I'll offer motion to conduct a second consideration and adopt the ordinance number 2024-091, amending Appendix A to this New Ulm City Code, the zoning ordinance of the city of New Ulm, amend Table 3-1, and update the development standards in the RT-1 Traditional Neighborhood Single Family Residence and the B3 Community Business Zoning Districts, and approve the attached summary of the ordinance amendments to be published in the New Ulm Journal.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 6.2 is in regards to ordinance number 2024-092, second consideration. Mr. Snowberg.
Yes. This concerns the rezoning of property that is located in the Wells subdivision, so that's the plat that you just considered. In this particular case, the property is being rezoned from AOS, which is Agricultural Open Space, to R1, which is single family. That designation, though, would only apply to four of the five lots, so it'd be lot two, three, four, and five. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at their September 26 meeting. The petitioner in this case is the city of New Ulm. The property has been annexed, and there are three conditions that are identified in the rezoning ordinance. The first condition requires that the property be annexed. That has been completed. The second condition is that the city council needs to approve the final plat. That has now been completed. And the third condition is that the plat is to be recorded at the county recorder's office. So, that's something that is pending getting the necessary signatures. That would complete the report.
Thank you, Mr. Snowberg.
Motion to conduct the second consideration and adopt ordinance number 2024-092, amending Appendix A to this New Ulm City Code to rezon from AOS Agricultural Open Space to R1 Single Family Residence District, the properly legally described as lots two, three, four, and five, block one of the Wells addition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That motion does carry. Under New Business, item 7.1 is a hardship deferral for the 2025 installment due for the 2018 USA improvements.
I think this is one property we've approved for multiple years, so I'm going to go ahead and offer the resolution to approve the hardship deferral to the 2025 installment due of $2,619.63 for the 2018 USA improvement charges for the property owner at 1116 Third North Street, New Ulm. Legal description is a rear 80 feet of Lot 14, block 185, north of Center.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by, oh, nope. Director, Assistant Director Amira, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Warmka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion carries. Item number 7.2 is the appointment of Ellie Sweeney to the Sister Cities Commission.
I'll motion to approve the appointment of Ellie Sweeney to the Sister City Commission to fill the unexpired term of Keith Roloff.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? That motion does carry, and welcome aboard the Sister Cities Commission, Ellie. Item number 7.3 is ingress easement with agreement with M&amp;D Properties LLC. Mr. Nysley.
Good evening. Standing in for the city manager on this item tonight.
Thank you.
So, the New Ulm Public Utilities was approached by Dale Bushard requesting an easement to access M&amp;D properties through property owned by the city of New Ulm. The property owned by M&amp;D is all with, entirely within the Minnesota River floodplain, and it has no public street access, and now has been enrolled in the reinvest in Minnesota Reserve Program, also known as the RIM program. The state, in order to, in order to inspect the property for compliance with the regulations that surround that program, is requesting access by M&amp;D for the purpose, again, of administering the program. The document will grant permanent access through an easement over and across existing private, an existing private well road which runs parallel to the M&amp;D property. And you can see in your maps, in your packets, there's a map showing the location of this proposed easement area. It's essentially to the south of the Kala woodworking building and the land that is currently vacant that's owned by, I believe, MVTL. The city attorney is the one that drafted this, this agreement, and I'm sure he would also be available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nysley.
I know we've done this in the past, so I'm going to offer a motion to approve the egress easement with M&amp;D properties, granting access to M&amp;D property through city of New Ulm property to satisfy requirements by the state of Minnesota for the reinvest in Minnesota Reserve Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Item 7.4, Nicollet County, CASA 37, snow removal agreement.
Mad President, City Counselors, this is a yearly agreement that we bring before you for review and approval. It's just an agreement for city crews to perform the snow removal activities from the bridge to Highway 14.
The only question I have, Joe, is, has there been an increase? So, we're getting reimbursed $520 a month to take care of that portion of the road for four months, five months, whatever it is in the winter. Have we had an increase? And if so, when was the last one?
I'm not sure when the last one was, but while I've been in this position, it's been at that same amount, so.
It's due for an increase. Gas has not went down.
It's, it was reviewed with the street superintendent as well, so he felt that it was adequate for the time they spend out there, so.
I don't mind that we do it. I think it's very important and makes sense for us to do it, but I just make sure that we're fairly compensated for it as well. So, maybe next year, we can look at an adjustment there. So, I'll go ahead and approve the Nicollet County Highway 37 snow removal agreement dated October 8, 2024, and authorize the city manager and the finance director to execute the agreement.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 7.5, task order for 2020-07 for Airport Engineering Services.
Mad President, City Counselors, this is the next step in the land acquisition process for the Crosswind Runway 927 Improvement Project at the airport. So, bringing the task order to you today for approval, and that would allow Meaden Hunt to begin the tasks associated with the land acquisition process.
I'll motion to approve task order number 2020-07 for Airport Engineering Services, adding to the task to the Meaden Hunt Incorporated Professional Services contract in the amount of $239,194.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Item 7.6, first consideration of ordinance number 2024-TBD, amending Chapter 5 of the city code. Mr. Dalton is not here, but this is in regard to liquor licensing and regulation of the city code. So, if you've had a chance to go through your packet, we're just kind of cleaning up some language in regards to service and notices relating to the licensee. It is in your packet if you have any questions.
Yeah, it looks like we're just cleaning up a little bit of redundant sentencing structure, so I'll make a motion to conduct the first consideration of ordinance number 2024-TBD for the city of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, amending Chapter 5, Section 5.03, subdivision 6 of the city code.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That does carry. Item 7.7, waive Planning Commission approval of EDA property sale.
I know Mr. Dalton was going to report on that as well, but I'll go ahead and offer the resolution waiving the Planning Commission approval of the EDA property sale for the Garden Terrace properties located at 1,001, 1,021, North Garden Street, and the vacant lot identified by parcel numbers 001, period 570 dot 178 dot 004 dot 90.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I'm just going to ask, I mean, from the EDA's public meeting, were there any public comments on it in regards to it, or that?
We did have a couple of questions in regard to the sale, but they were more kind of clarifying questions. There also was a gentleman who came up in support of the sale of Garden Terrace, feeling that the city should, and the EDA should not really be in the business of landowning and managing land, that it kind of stifles the ability for continued economic growth. We at the EDA agree with those sentiments, and so.
Didn't the other person just have questions about when, when was everything going to happen?
Kind of, yeah.
That I was told, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty straightforward.
Yep.
I had a couple of calls. I mean, most of mine were, one wanted to know if another driveway addition was going to be added, which doesn't appear to be, and most, again, most people just want to know, are they going to raise my rent and how much?
Right. And, you know, I, some of the things that we liked about that, just speaking as an EDA commissioner, was, you know, they are looking to enhance the property as well, and improve the property, pickleball courts, you know, and those types of amenities.
Barbecue center or something.
Yep. You know, with the potential of exploring another building. I don't know, Mayor Becker, would you have anything to add to that?
Not really as far as questions. I do believe that this is a big move for the city of New Ulm to get out of housing at fair market value. I think that, and it's been proven in reports, that we have depressed the rent rates, and if we get out of that business, I believe it is marching in the direction where we should be with respect to supporting EDA efforts. The monies from that, while we don't have an immediate need or use, will be invested and offset the loss of the income that we might generate, or the profits that we might have generated by operating those two properties. So, I applaud the efforts of the Economic Development Authority Commission, and look forward to continued approval here with this body.
The last thing, the Oak Hills, you know, originally had a real strong interest in this property, and just they're not in the financial shape to purchase that building. But, so we did try to help that situation out by giving, writing in the purchase agreement the first right of refusal if this company would decide to sell down the road, that Oak Hills would get the first opportunity to say yes or no. So, we wanted to help them out as well, because that's an important business in our community as well.
Yes, there was definitely a lot to consider, and the purchaser was certainly willing to work with the EDA and with the city, and to adjust to, you know, what we want as well, so positive there. I would just like Mr. Scott, if he can, just to kind of cite, since Mr. Dalton isn't here, why we would be doing something like this, why we would be waiving this.
This is the procedural requirement, Council President, Mayor Memphis, the Council. Every time the city or its boards or commissions is going to sell publicly owned property in the city, there's a requirement that the Planning Commission review and consider the sale for compliance with a comprehensive plan. In a case like this, where there's an existing use on the property that will not be changing, this is type of situation where the city council, which is authorized by statute, can dispense with that requirement. It just has to be by a two-thirds vote.
Thank you so much, Mr. Scott, for that extra information.
Well, I'm going to offer a resolution waiving the Planning Commission approval of the EDA property sale for Garden Terrace properties located at, excuse me, we already did it.
We, we did, we did have a motion and a second. I know, we're very enthusiastic about this here. Is there any additional discussion on this? Okay, Assistant Director Amira, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Warmka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion does carry. Item number 7.8, library donations and memorials.
We'll offer the resolution to accept donations and memorials to the New Ulm Public Library for the period beginning of June 1st to September 30, 2024. Those donations from Patty Lee Bach for $100 for books, an anonymous cash donation for $40, $25 from Linda Lindquist for books, $20 from Teresa Westrup for crochet books, $25 from Sue Ullery for craft, for crafts or pet books, and $1,000 from Alliance Club of New Ulm. Thank you, Lions Club, for large print books. Total of $1,210.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Assistant Director Amira, please call the roll.
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Warmka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion carries. With no additional business today, this meeting is adjourned.